Get going, and that is Commissioner Brenda Diaz, who has been with us for a long time on the Planning Commission and has served the citizens very well. We really appreciate your service to the city, but we found out that she's moving, and this will be her last Planning Commission meeting. So congratulations on the move, but thank you for all of your service. So let's give her a round of applause. We'll miss you very, very much. So our first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Have the commissioners looked at the agenda? Any additions, deletions, corrections? If there's a motion, a motion and a second? Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the August 10, 2017 minutes, and those were mailed to you earlier. And have all the commissioners reviewed those minutes? Any edits, deletions, additions? All right. I hear a motion. Some motion, a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the minutes are adopted. Next is Item D, which is the recognition of the council members. And I just take these as I see the council members come in. And I saw Councilman Davis, but I think -- Councilman, are you going to do it during your items? Speak during your items? Okay. Perfect. I saw Council Lady Johnson, but I don't -- I did see her. We'll recognize her on her item. Then, Councilman Leonardo, come on up. Welcome.
Thanks, and good afternoon. I appreciate, again, everybody's service on this board, and thanks so much for your hard work. I have a couple of things on tonight's agenda on -- still, it should be on the consent agenda. It's number five, and that is the Clarksville Pike UDO. I just really wanted to thank Singay and Jessica and Carrie and Brandon Burnett for all their hard work that went into this. This is something that we get to see, that, you know, the Planning Department really shines during this. They work very hard. They come to a lot of these community meetings till eight, nine o'clock at night. But so on this, we've worked really hard. We've had a meeting on January 6, January 23rd, February 27, March 27, and we had one just last week as well. So the communities had lots of opportunities to have input, and I think this is something that's going to be great for the Bordeaux area, so I definitely support that. And we saw the conditions that you have in front of you as well, so I'd appreciate, you know, the approval of that. And then also on the items for deferral, number 12, on the Hummingbird SP. I believe that was recommended to be deferred until next month. There's some more information that Public Works needs. We had a meeting about this particular project this week, so I would request that that be deferred until September. And again, thanks for your service, and good luck to Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Councilman. We appreciate it. Thank you for your comments. Next is Councilman Anthony Davis. I saw -- I'm sorry. Council Lady Johnson, you want to -- you had stepped out, I believe, so we'll come back to you.
Good evening, Chair Atkins, Secretary Sloan, Director Sloan, esteemed commissioners. Of course, I'm Karen Johnson, Councilmember for District 29. I'm here to speak in support of Item Number 26, that is 2017Z-088PR-001. Reason why I'm here to speak in support of this item for approval is because this is another example of a good developer. Our community overwhelmingly supports this development. The developer approached me, and I scheduled a community meeting at that time. They shared their plans with both the community and myself at the same time. And during that meeting, we were able to ask questions. They brought renderings, lots of information for my constituents who attended. And as a result, at the end of that meeting, overwhelmingly, the community is excited about this development and this developer. So I'm here on their behalf to express appreciation to the developers who are here to bathe, and we look forward to this project taking shape in Antioch, Percy Priest Lake area. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady. Any other council members? Make sure we -- I don't see any. So next is Item E, which is Items For Deferral or Withdrawal. Bob?
Yes, starting with Item Number 2, on the deferral items is Case 2017SP-065-001. This is a request to rezone from IWD to SP zoning on a portion of property located at Perimeter Court, unnumbered, to permit a hotel. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 28 Planning Commission meeting, and I will note that Commissioner Atkins is recusing himself on that item. Next item on the deferral list is Item 4, Case 2017SP-071-001. This is a request to rezone from IR to SP zoning on property located at 905 Cherokee Avenue to permit up to 150 multifamily units and 16 townhomes and commercial space. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 14 Planning Commission meeting. Next item's Item 8, Case 2017Z-085PR-001. This is a request to rezone from AR-2A to CL zoning on property located at 6804 Nolansville Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 28 Planning Commission meeting. Next item's Item 11, Case 2017Z-016TX-001. This is a request to amend Section 1712040E.26 of the Metro Zoning Code relating to electric fences. Staff recommendation is to withdraw. Next item's Item 12, Case 2017SP-057-001. This is the Hummingbird SP. This is a request to rezone from RS-10 to SP zoning on property located at Hummingbird Drive to permit 26 multifamily units. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 14 Planning Commission meeting. Next item's Item 14, Case 2017NHL-001-002. This is a request for development plan approval for a portion of property at 901 Dalebrook Lane. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 12 Planning Commission meeting. Next item's Item 15, Case 2017S-076-001. This is a request for concept plan approval to create 48 lots on properties at 2942, 2946, and 3,000 Lebanon Pike, and a portion of property at 201 Walcott Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 14 Planning Commission meeting. Next item's Item 25, Case 2017Z-087PR-001. This is a request to rezone from RS-5 to R-6A zoning at 1,001 West McKinney Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to September 14. And the last item on the deferral list is Item 28, Case 2017Z-091PR-001. A request to expand the urban zoning overlay district to various properties located between Cabot Drive and Riley Parkway from Nob Road north to Annex Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 28 Planning Commission meeting. Those are all the items for deferral.
Thank you, Bob. So the items, I'll name these out and then make sure I got them right. So Items For Deferral or Withdrawal are Items Number 2, 4, 8, 11, 12, 14, 15, 25, and 28. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So Commissioners, you've heard the Items For Deferral or Withdrawal. Is there any questions? Is there a motion? There's been a motion to approve and a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the Items For Deferral or Withdrawal have been approved. Item F, the Consent Agenda.
And before I get to the Consent Agenda, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And as noted to the public, items on the Consent Agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the Consent Agenda. So as I read the following items into the record, please raise your hand if you'd like one of these items removed from the Consent Agenda. Starting with Item Number 1, Case 2017SP-035-001. This is a request to rezone from RS-5 to SP zoning on a portion of property located at East Trinity Lane to permit up to 190 multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item on the Consent is Item Number 5, Case 2017UD-004-001. This is the Clarksville Pike UDO. This is a request for an urban design overlay on various properties along Clarksville Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with a substitute ordinance. Next item is Item 9, Case 2017CP-0-01. This is a request to amend the Nashville Next, the general plan for Nashville and Davidson County and its component parts to include updates referred to as Update 2017. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item's Item 10, Case 2016Z-024TX-002. This is a request to amend Chapter 17.04 of the Metro Code pertaining to telecommunication facilities. Staff recommendation is to approve with an amendment. Next item on the Consent Agenda is Item 13, Case 2017SP-072-001, the Vernon Avenue Townhomes SP. This is a request to rezone from CS to SP zoning on properties located at 685 and 693 Vernon Avenue to permit 58 multifamily residential units, including a maximum of nine live-work units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, and I will note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on Item 13. Next item's Item 16, Case 2017S-195-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create two lots on property located at 2205 Demerius Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and an exception to the compatibility criteria. Next item's Item 19, Case 2006P-013-001. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan for the putt overlay district on property at 3474 and 3500 Brick Church Pike and Brick Church Pike, unnumbered, to permit 315 single-family residential units and 173 multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item on the Consent is Item 20, Case 4-86P-001. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan approval, including a variance from the sidewalk requirements for a putt overlay district on property located at 2162 Murphysboro Pike to permit a two-story storage building and the expansion of an existing self-service storage facility. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, is to approve with conditions the revision and final site plan, and a recommendation of approval with conditions of the variance to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Next item is Item 23, Case 2017Z-082PR-001. This is a request to rezone from RS-5 to R-6A zoning on property at 113 East Moreland Street. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is Item 24, 2017Z-086PR-001. A request to rezone from RS-5 to R-6 zoning on property located at 130 Fern Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item's Item 26, Case 2017Z-088PR-001. This is a request to rezone from AR-2A to RS-10 zoning on property located at 3612 Butler Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, and I will note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on Item 26. I think I failed to state that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on Item 20 as well. And next item on the Consent is Item 27, Case 2017Z-090PR-001. This is a request to rezone from RS-5 to R-6 zoning on property located at 610 Vestor Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And the last item is Item 32, Accept the Director's Report and Approve Administrative Items.
Thank you, Bob. Let's go through the items that are on the Consent Agenda. Item 1, 5, 9, 10, 13, 16, 19, 20, 23, 24, 26, 27, and 32.
That's correct.
Commissioners, you've heard the items that are on the Consent Agenda. Any discussion? All right. There's been a motion to approve and a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the Consent Agenda is adopted. So for the, all of the folks here, make sure, Bob, that I'm, and Doug, make sure I'm right on the ones that we are going to hear. It will be Items 3, 6, 7, 17, 18, 21, and 22. Is that correct? All right. Well, let's get started. Item, and so for everyone else, we've taken up all of the other items. Let me repeat it one more time. Items 3, 6, 7, 17, 18, 21, and 22 will be on public hearing tonight. We'll start with Item 3.
This is a request to rezone from R-6 to SPR for up to 18 residential units. Staff's recommendation is to approve the conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The site contains properties located at 1716, 1718, 1720, and 1722 Delta Avenue and Trowell Street, at the northeast and southeast corners of Trowell Street and Delta Avenue, and contains 0.84 acres. The site is, excuse me, the site is currently zoned R-6, which requires a minimum 6,000 square foot lot, and is intended for single-family dwellings and duplexes. Currently, R-6 will permit a maximum of six lots with two duplex lots and four single-family lots for a total of eight units. The land use policy for this site was recently amended from T4 Neighborhood Maintenance to T4 Neighborhood Evolving by the Planning Commission on Thursday, August 10, 2017. The site plan proposes a maximum of 18 multifamily dwelling units. Seven attached units will front Delta Avenue, and eight attached units will front Trowell Street. Three units will also front Trowell Street in a separate structure located on the western side of Trowell Street. Jenkins Street will provide one vehicular access point to the proposed dwelling units. Three units fronting Delta Avenue will contain two car garages. A total of 21 surface parking spaces are being provided on-site, and surface parking will be provided on the, to the east, behind the units fronting Trowell and Delta Avenue. On-street parking will be installed along Trowell Street, adjacent to a six-foot sidewalk. Parking for the units on the western side of Trowell Street will be provided by the on-street parking and the surface parking provided across Trowell Street to the east. The surface parking meets the lineal distance requirement of the zoning code to provide parking to the separate units. An A-type landscape buffer will be installed along the eastern property line to buffer the existing structures to the east of the site. Additional landscaping will be placed within the SP. This SP includes a five-foot sidewalk and four-foot planting strip along Delta Avenue, which meets the requirements for a local road. A five-foot sidewalk is required along the western frontage of Trowell Street, which fronts Units 16, 17, and 18. All units will have a pedestrian connection to the proposed sidewalks. The applicant has provided preliminary elevations, which illustrate the facade of units fronting Delta Avenue. These, the elevations provided indicate raised foundations, 25% glazing, and the location of the principal entrance for the units. Elevations for all facades fronting public streets will be required when the final site plan is submitted. This SP achieves three critical planning goals. It supports a variety of transportation choices, creates walkable neighborhoods, and provides a range of housing choice. Bus service is present along Garfield Street, approximately 300 feet to the southeast of the site. The increased intensity through infill development makes bus service and similar transit services more feasible because it likely generates additional ridership. The sidewalks proposed by this SP will improve the existing sidewalk network and increase pedestrian circulation through the neighborhood. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? You'll have 10 minutes, and you can save two of the 10 for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is John Gore. I'm with Barge Cawthorne and Associates Civil Engineers, and I'm representing the developers on this. We've been working closely with staff over the last three or four months on this plan. When we had originally approached planning staff, our concept was a little bit different. We had units facing access off of the rear off of Jenkins Street, and a little bit of a different configuration. But like I say, over the last couple of months, we've worked closely with planning staff. They had us push the units to the side street and that, it was labeled a street. Trowell is labeled a street, but it's kind of an odd, it's kind of in-between a street and an alley. It only has a 25-foot ride away. So we worked closely with planning and also with Metro Public Works to design, to basically widen the street so that it would function with new on-street parking, sidewalk, grass strip, just like a normal street. So we've been working for a while on the design. The developers have been in close communication with Councilman O'Connell, who's supportive of the additional density. We're only about two blocks off of 8th Avenue, so we've got a major transit corridor close by, as well as housing and other employment opportunities and recreational opportunities. So I think, like I say, staff has been very helpful and very supportive. We worked with the other departments, Public Works, Planning, Stormwater, and like I say, we appreciate your consideration and be glad to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we'll make sure that you have two minutes for your rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up, sir. And you'll have two minutes. Please state your name and your address.
Chad Laut, 1709 Nassau Street. So we're in opposition for the reason being, the recent community plan change to T4NE allows much additional density, more so than what we're comfortable with in relation to this and our property. We also feel like it does not provide a range of housing choices per the planning goals that were listed under the, in the information provided. But the main reason I'm here, though, is that, as the gentleman just stated, the alley, which is supposedly now is Jenkins Street, and it was always, I guess, in our mind, considered an alley, the parking lot for this whole development, for the most part, 18 units are gonna, the driveway is to this Jenkins alley. And, you know, we have to use the alley ourselves to get to and from our property on the backside for parking, and in the write-up, they estimated some, over some 200 daily trips are going to be used on this alley, and we feel that it's very excessive. But that was my biggest opposition there, is basically the parking lot, alley to Jenkins is, we feel very, for all the residences that face Nassau Street, it's going to be very inconvenient and just traffic and everything, so.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the applicant will have two minutes for rebuttal.
I'll just add, we appreciate the neighbors' comments. I will add that the first concept that we came with, the parking was not off the rear alley, but when we met with Public Works and worked with planning staff, it was important for them, when we made our new sidewalk improvements on Trowell and on Delta, to have uninterrupted pedestrian path as much as possible. So the first plan didn't actually have that, but it was a staff request or requirement to have the parking off the alley. And also, we'll add that, working with Public Works in the permitting stage, we have to widen the alley, bring it up to new standards. So we appreciate the concerns, but like I say, we're working kind of the staff's direction and feel like, once we add new sidewalks and widen streets and alleys to meet current Public Works standards, that it should function as they intend. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we declare the public hearing closed. Council Lady, you want to go first?
Thank you.
Give you a second.
Thank you. I mean, the first question I was going to ask is how wide is the, is the quote "alley", and I think it was answered that y'all are going to be making it wider, which seems like a good response to the concern about it not being currently adequate to handle the traffic that's there. So I hope that's, I hope that's an adequate change to that. And then I was also trying to figure out housing orientation, and if this orientation to Trowell was inconsistent with what I thought might be housing orientation facing Jenkins, but apparently everything faces Nassau. Can somebody over there confirm? Yes, all the houses face Nassau and have their backs to Jenkins. Is that correct?
Unit 1, as shown on this site plan, would have its northern exposure facing Jenkins, and these units would front Trowell Street, and the units here front Delta.
Right. So I guess I was looking at the housing orientation on Trowell as opposed to Jenkins and trying to put that in the bigger picture of the other houses on, in the area. Thinking they would be facing Jenkins, but they are, and this may be an unfair question to ask, y'all looking at a bunch of boxes.
I'm going to pull up an aerial so we can take a look.
Let's look. That'd be great. Okay. So Jenkins is kind of everybody's backyard?
Yes.
All right. So this new orientation, to put things on Trowell as opposed to having them face Jenkins, is not a change from an existing orientation?
No.
So it's appropriate? Okay, that was.
So while Jenkins is labeled as a street, it essentially functions as an alley?
Right. I've got one of those in my neighborhood. I know how that evolution happens. And then finally, there was a reference to one, one home that would be dedicated to workforce housing and for maybe five years. I'm just wondering if anybody knows if they're taking advantage of the HIP grant program. Is that, can anyone answer that one?
Come on, hold on one second. Come on up to the microphone so that we can get it on record. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sean Davidson with 1720 Delta. I'm the developer, one of them. And we were committing to one unit being under $200,000 with a five-year covenant on it. We were not, at this time, pursuing any grants or additional funding.
That's great. Use it, let's use it on something else. So you can make that work within your current business plan?
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay. All right.
Anybody else?
That was my big question. Thank you very much. Well, having, having those questions addressed, those were the things that concerned me, and I understand the neighbors' concern about traffic, but if Public Works has evaluated, it made recommendations on how to make that better than I support the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Council Lady. Commissioner Diaz?
I had a question, well, more of a, to point out that the Unit 13, it's like, Public Works has a bullet point that says that it needs to be revised because it doesn't have clear vehicular access. So just wanting to point that out, that it needs to be revised, you know, it should be something that planning looks into whenever they revise that. And then also, I know planning always works with developers to get double frontage, like for Unit 9 and Unit 1, just to make sure that the architecture addresses both streets, but I think that's it. I think it's a good addition to the neighborhood, and I support planning's recommendation.
Commissioner Tibbs?
And I think, so both streets are getting widened, right? That Jenkins and
I think it's a good addition to the neighborhood, and I support planning's recommendation.
Commissioner Tibbs?
And I think, so both streets are getting widened, right? That Jenkins and Trall, is that the right one? Trial? They both are? I guess I'll look to you.
That's my understanding, that both will be improved.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is appropriately done, and especially looking at the aerial of some of the other development that's happening already. I think this, it looks appropriate. I'd be willing to support staff recommendation.
Commissioner Farr?
No comments.
No, you should do it.
No comments.
Commissioner Gobler?
So units 16, 17, and 18, they would be using street parking. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And, but we have plenty of street parking along, along trial?
Trial? Yes.
Okay. Oh, it makes sense to me.
Commissioner Blackshear? All right, we need a motion. There's been a motion for approval. Is there a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of staff recommendation, say aye. Opposed, no? Ayes have it, and it's adopted. We're on item number six.
Item number six is a zone change request for 1005 Joseph Avenue. The request is to change zoning from SPR to R6. The property is highlighted in red. This is located along Joseph Avenue, just north of Cleveland Street in East Nashville. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove. The current zoning is SPR zoning. This allows for single-family residential dwelling units and detached accessory dwelling units, or DDUs. The policy is T4 urban neighborhood maintenance. This policy is intended to preserve the existing urban residential neighborhood character. And when changes do occur over time, efforts should be made to retain the existing character of the neighborhood. The property, as you can see, is again highlighted in red. This is located along Joseph Avenue, mid-block in East Nashville. This existing zoning does currently allow for single-family residential uses and DDUs, if they are eligible. This lot is eligible for a detached accessory dwelling unit. The neighborhood consists of primarily single-family residential uses. You can see with the yellow on the screen, those are single-family uses. The orange are two-family units, and they are located generally closer to the corridor along Cleveland. The proposed zoning would allow for a two-family residential dwelling unit, which is inappropriate in this area, given the existing neighborhood pattern and the location of the interior to the neighborhood. The neighborhood maintenance policy is intended to preserve the general character of the area, which mainly consists of single-family dwelling units. Two-family units may be appropriate along the corridor or corner within certain neighborhood maintenance policies. The zone, the proposed zoning would allow for two-family unit located mid-block within this neighborhood maintenance policy. The proposed zoning is inconsistent with this policy, and therefore, staff recommends approval. Disapproval, sorry.
Thank you. Is the, we'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Come on up. Thanks for coming. State your name and your address. You have 10 minutes, and then you can reserve two of the 10, from the 10 for rebuttal.
Good evening. My name is Richard Roberts, and my address is 1005 Joseph Avenue. And that particular property, I've owned that property for 20-plus years, raised my kids, my family. We grew up in that property and in that particular neighborhood, went to all the schools in the area, Glenn, Jerry Baxter East High. So I'm a longtime resident of the community. And what my plans are, is to build a lovely, two-single-family homes located on that property that's gonna enhance the whole entire area. The current home is an existing fill-in. It's a ranch-style home that was built back in the '70s. It does not today currently fit in with the other homes in the community. So it's a more modern ranch-style home. So I'm looking to improve the neighborhood, enhance the neighborhood, and also occupy one of the single-family homes that I'm gonna construct on my property.
Thank you, sir. And we'll reserve you two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Come on up, if you would like to speak, and state your name and your address.
My name is Daniel Robinson, and I just want to support what he is doing on Joseph. I live on 1109 Joseph. Been there for years, and the neighborhood is changing, and I know he's gonna do something to make it beautiful for years to come, so I support what he is doing.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up.
Hey, how are you? My name is Omid Dumeeny. I live at 1204 North 2nd Street, next block over. I'm here, I'd like to just state publicly, I'm not opposed, okay? But I'm here speaking in support of you, your staff recommendation, and that you support the policy of Nashville Next, if that makes sense. I mean, this whole, you know, it pits neighbors against neighbors. For me, I feel honestly, this is, this doesn't feel good to get up here and be saying this. Unfortunately, I wish that our representative had been more forthright in explaining Nashville Next policy to these members of our community so that we wouldn't end up in this position. But here we are. Again, Nashville, Nashville Next, I think you're gonna hear in this case and maybe in the next one, and you saw on the map, there are properties in the area that do have two homes on one lot. And one of those in particular was passed in, it was, the zoning change was passed in 2014, okay? I have emails, I was just looking back in my files, that we sent in opposition of that in 2014, okay? That was before Nashville Next, which was adopted in, what? Summer of 2015, okay? So when we look at those properties and we reference them as a precedent, let's please remember that that was before the policy change. I would again ask you to support staff recommendation to keep this zoned for single-family. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? And the owner can come on back up. The applicant, two-minute rebuttal.
Yes, as the gentleman previously stated, there are many homes on that block, the block over throughout that community that already have two single-family homes built, new constructions, homes. So I'm seeking to do the same. And also, like I said, I'm gonna occupy one of my homes, and I'm hoping that you guys can approve it. The Cleveland Park community also has recommend approval for me to be able to go forward, and I'm just wishing that you guys grant their recommendation so I can move forward with plans to return back to the community with my family.
Thank you, sir. Councilman?
I would like to thank the neighbors coming out in support and in opposition. Referring back to Nashville Next, we had a large community meeting, which we videotaped, and which we talked about the policy. And I know it was a very busy time, and I know the planning staff worked very hard. So to address, you know, my constituents concerned about not talking about the policy or being forthright, well, the videotape in which planning attended, it was well-staffed, they did an excellent job, and we did the Cleveland Park gym. And before that big videotape meeting, we had several community meetings sponsored by your staff. And I just want to thank you for your cooperation. Now, this gentleman has been to, and I may be off by number, he has been to at least two Cleveland Park Neighborhood Association's meetings. He received overwhelming support from his neighbors. We are looking at changing the policy. And, you know, my position, which I've always been, you know, what we do for a developer, we should do for the neighbor. This gentleman is trying to live a better lifestyle by living in one of the houses and using the new house to pay for the other one, so he doesn't have a mortgage. And when neighbors do this, this is a, this is something that we are encouraging. So if you have the vote against this, I understand. But our September Cleveland Park meeting will be packed, and we're gonna videotape the support. And then our October meeting will be packed, and we're gonna videotape the support that this gentleman has. And a previous case is gonna come. And the neighbors that live on the street, some were here too today, you know, supporting the other case on Joseph. So with this kind of community support, I'm gonna be asking for a policy change. And I've already spoke to the great staff at planning, and the goal is to have those policy change meetings with overwhelming, large number of neighbors, and more importantly, videotape that meeting because, you know, sometimes, you know, people have bad memories and think that we didn't have a meeting. And, but more importantly now, is the gentleman has community support. And if you haven't disapproved it, I don't want to hold him up any longer because he's been coming to the meetings. People have been coming out to support him. The community has asked me what's going on. As you would see, for a project coming up, there's 50 level letters of support for a similar project for neighbors that live on that street and around that area. So what I'm asking today is, I know you probably can't pass it because the policy's not right, but what I'm committing to do is to hold this on second or third in order to get that policy changed so we can support it. Is Joseph is a street right behind Dickerson Road, where we have large condo developments going up. And I think a couple of, you know, two houses on lots will be a good step down. Especially, I don't think a house built in the '70s is historic. You know, some of my younger neighbors may think it's historic, but, you know, I don't think so. So I'm asking you, I know you probably can't support it, but I'm gonna support my constituents, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna move this forward. But you have my commitment for us to have the policy amendment meetings, you know, before, if we can't have enough of them before third, I will hold it on third. And in order for us and the planning staff to address the policy change that we are requesting for that area of Joseph. And I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, councilman. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Slough?
Yeah, if I could mention something. This is an area that, that I've talked with staff about, and its proximity to Dickerson Road, the number of duplexes in the area, some of the housing stock in the area. I think it is something we need to look at. But I agree that, obviously with my staff, that the policy currently can't support this or the next case that we're, that we're gonna look at. But we've also said that looking at the policy for this area will be a priority of the department as we move forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Farr, you wanna go first?
Sure. Well, that clarification was helpful. And I think that in terms of going about this the correct way, we need to do the policy change first, consider policy, and then go back and look at what that means for the existing housing stock and how that would get redeveloped. So I am in favor of staff's recommendation to disapprove.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Yeah, the clarification was good because I was, I agree that I actually pretty much would support it, but if we can get the policy changed in that way, it would be more the logical way about going about it. So I support staff recommendation, but I'd definitely like to see the policy being looked at.
Commissioner Diaz? Counsel lady?
Thank you. I did go look at this, drive this neighborhood, and partly, it was, it was fun to see all the other streets we've heard about through other public hearings. So it was, felt like a walk down memory lane. I got to know some old friends. And it was helpful to, you know, get a better view than you get from Google Maps to see what these, what these homes look like. I appreciate the council member's creativity. I mean, this is an area, I believe, that he rezoned SPR to open up the possibility of the detached accessory dwelling units, which is something we haven't managed to do citywide for other areas that are, that are zoned for single-family homes. So to me, that, that currently gives an option for housing choices and additional income that might enable a renovation to turn a ranch into something more appropriate for the rest of the neighborhood. It clearly is smaller than, than the other ones there. So I appreciate the need to upgrade and improve the house, but I also agree with the previous commissioners that it's more appropriate to do it in a way that's consistent with policy. And if changing the policy needs to happen first, that seems like we need to get the horse back in front of the cart there. And currently, if we just allow a zone change, that, you know, there's some, some conditions of, you know, creating lovely homes and living there that are not at all guaranteed by just a zone change. So I'd feel more comfortable if we put some other things in place. So I'd support the staff's recommendation of disapproval.
Commissioner Blackshear?
Just to reiterate what the other commissioners said, I mean, it just seems premature to take this up, and apparently, the next case, too. If there's a policy change that's being proposed, but not yet in front of us, that we can't use when deciding this case, I'll be in favor of the staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Gobler?
I support the staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Higginson?
Not to belabor the point, but here I go. No, I wanted to thank the neighbor for coming out. It was a nice articulation of not pitting neighbor against neighbor and being the support of someone, but also sticking with the fact that Nashville Next was a long process, with a lot of people involved. And appreciate and respect both, both everyone who spoke, and appreciate the dialogue. Nashville Next was not the answer to everything, but it was the best answer we could come up with, with everyone inputting. I was part of that process, but not on this side of the table. And that's what guides our planning. So for future, you know, as you talk with your council members, look at your policy and see what's appropriate with the policy so that you don't have to go through these kinds of conversations. If the neighborhood wants a policy change and they come together for that, then that's something we look at. And so I am gonna make a motion to go with the staff's recommendation to disapprove.
It's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second? Need more discussion?
Yeah, one question discussion. Would the, would the council member or the sponsor prefer a motion of deferral? Can we ask that question now?
Well, I think he stated in his testimony that he wants to act on it tonight. Is that correct, councilman?
If I could add, that the councilman is committed to me to get the policy straightened out and to hold the necessary community meetings to get the policy straightened out. So, you know, I think it's six of one half dozen the other. I would certainly prefer if that were the case, that if the councilman was okay with deferring and allowing us the chance to do that. But if it moves forward and then he sends it back, either way, I hope he allows us the chance to get the policy corrected first.
So procedurally, can he send it back to get rid of the disapproval so that he's not up against the 27 vote requirement? Okay. Fair enough.
So there's a proper motion and a second? Any other discussion?
There's been a motion to approve staff's recommendation, which is a disapproval. All in favor, seeing no other discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no? Ayes have it. It is disapproved. Item seven.
The next item is item seven? Oh.
Oh. This is a request for a zone change from SPR to RM 20A on properties located at 1104 and 1108 Joseph Avenue. This is about a block north of the property we were just looking at, so north of Evanston, east of Dickerson Pike, and east Nashville. The properties are highlighted in red and total 0.47 acres. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove. The existing zoning is the SP, which allows for single-family residential units or detached accessory dwelling unit status. The policy is T4 urban neighborhood maintenance, which would be intended to preserve the general character of the existing residential neighborhood. Much like the last property, this lot is located mid-block. There's actually an existing duplex on the northern lot that's included in this application. And then there are primarily single-family dwellings throughout the neighborhood. You'll see some commercial and multifamily development to the rear. Those properties front and have access directly to the Dickerson Pike corridor, and they're in a mixed-use policy area. So this is a shift in policy to this side. The existing zoning would allow for the DADU option. There is a built alley here and they would qualify, although not on the lot with the duplex as that stands, because that's already flexibility there. The requested zoning, RM 20A, would permit up to nine multifamily units on this site, which would be inconsistent with the surrounding character of the neighborhood, which is primarily single-family with some limited two-family scattered throughout. And so for those reasons and the fact that the existing zoning does permit some flexibility for the owner with the DADU option, staff is recommending disapproval of the request to change the zoning to RM 20A.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant here? Just like last time, you'll have 10 minutes and then you can save two of the 10 for rebuttal.
Okay. I've been living in the neighborhood since I was...
And state your name and your address, just for the...
Daniel Robinson, 1107 Joseph. I've been living in the neighborhood since I was 12. We own the property, we own a lot of property in the neighborhood, but that property right there has become like an eyesore. And I happen to live across the street from it. And I see all the developments and nice things going on in the neighborhood. So I like, I need to develop my property. I'm getting tired of looking at it, looking at being the eyesore in the neighborhood. And this process brought me here. But listening to what y'all just said, I understand that it probably be appropriate to wait for Mr. Davis to change the neighborhood planning before I could get rezoned. But that's, that's basically what I...
Well, you can. You know, generally, it's really up to the, to you and the, and the councilmen whether to delay it or not, to defer it until you change the plan. So, or we can do the same process that we did on the last. It's your choice.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, please.
Let it roll. Councilman, given what the applicant said, are you agreeable to deferral here?
Well, here, come up to the microphone, Councilman.
I think with the, as far as the policy goes, we're going to end up having with the community the same conversation on this part of Joseph as, as we are the other.
All right, let me kind of, and I agree with you, we can have that discussion and we definitely want the staff and the commissioners' support. The Robinsons, they own probably the majority of those houses along. So the family are going to be neighbors to this build. And also, the family has their own construction company. And they're going, they're trying to do some of the same stuff. You know, once again, you know, I know we all support, you know, the people that live in the neighborhood participating in the construction. We're originally, we're going to do like the whole block of Joseph, you know what I mean, just to get everybody so we're consistent. But some of the neighbors, hey, we support them, we support them on those properties, but let's break it down and do the individual properties, you know, as a whole. If I can, I'm fine with deferring this, but I believe I can request the bill so it stays on track for public hearing. You know, I would like to, I can do that, I believe I can do that, because this is a basis, base zone change.
So the goal was be, is to have your public hearing at the council level, to stay on that track, and then send them back and then amend it at third reading?
Yes, sir. But I think we had a tweet where I can't do that anymore. I'm not sure, maybe my...
You won't be able to, you will not be able to have a public hearing for both of them if you defer this one and the other one already has the disapproval. They'll actually be on different timetables.
And this is the one that received the, the 50 letters of support from the Cleveland Park neighbors. And...
If this one is deferred today, but the bill is still introduced, a first reading could be as early as October 3rd, while second reading would be November 7th. And I believe that would be more than 30 days, they could proceed with the public hearing if it were deferred here.
But if we did a deferral, they could proceed with the public hearing, but technically it would be considered an approval since we haven't acted.
After 30 days, yes.
Okay. Then it's probably better, sir, it's probably better that they take action today, just so that the record stays clear and the cases stay together.
Yes, sir.
But Mr. Davis is always, the Councilman Davis has always lived up to his commitments to the commission, so I'm sure that he'll hold it at that point and join us with a community meeting to get the policy straightened out.
All right. So the disapproval will, will be, and then we'll hold it after we disapprove it, he'll hold it, and then public hearing, then they'll send it back to us on third reading.
Yes, sir.
Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sounds good. And you'll have two minutes for a rebuttal. Okay. All right. Unless, anything else?
I'm Jacqueis Boyd. I live at 1104. This is my brother. And as he already stated, we own the majority of these properties. And we just want to participate in the development in the Cleveland Park area.
Thank you, sir. All right, you'll have two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Come on up and you'll have two minutes and just state your name and your address.
Yeah, my name is Leslie Davis. I'm 3202 Leswood Lane, Nashville, Tennessee. And I was, it's remarkable to live in this part of Nashville's history where we're transitioning from a small city to a big town. And it's great to be here with a Nashvillian who has property he wants to develop. And he's about 70 years old, these kids' dad. And, you know, we've come through a long time, the 50s and 60s. And this is great, meeting here to try to get approval for an old person like myself, to get approval to develop houses, develop property in our neighborhood. If you look around Nashville, Nashville is transitioning rather rapidly. How many people are here from Nashville originally? Not many. And it would be a tragedy and a travesty if we do not allow this family to develop this property. I mean, having roots here for nearly, well, 30 years from a century, let's say that. And being, coming through a lot of history and then actually going through a lot of information and a lot of situations right now that I never thought I would have to bear or to see again, but we are. You know, let's be realistic about these things. And I understand about policy. But, you know, it's difficult to talk about policy and right across the alley is a development just like this, right down the alley is a development, walking distance, rock throwing distance. So let's, let's really be true about what our purpose is here. Isn't it to serve the citizen of this great city of Nashville, which is getting greater? And we now have an airport and we don't have to go to Berryfield and walk out on a tarmac.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, Richard Roberts. I'm also in support of the project that the Robinson family want to build on their property on Joseph, as well as my project. But the Nashville area is revolving, the community is revolving right before everyone's very eyes. And the growth is all around us. To, to make it stagnant is not necessary if we're going to move forward as a community and as a city. We need to do that together.
Thank you, sir. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Making sure, want to make sure everybody has a chance to talk. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
That's right. My name is Omid Yumini. I still live at 1204 North Second Street. I didn't raise my hand when they asked who's from Nashville, Tennessee. I'm not from here originally, but this isn't what this is about, is it? Again, this is a policy issue, okay? I bought a home, I only own one home, I don't own a whole street. And I bought a home in a single-family residential neighborhood. And I appreciate the, the staff member who reminded me that, yeah, we actually had the base zoning on our entire neighborhood changed from single-family to SPR to allow DADUs. So now you can actually have two houses on every single lot. You just can't build them side by side, okay? So you can put a house in your backyard and you can rent it out and you can make that extra money. But, you know, again, for me, what I'm here and I'm standing for is my quality of life. I can tell you that the people who live near those houses that they referenced that are stone's throw away, those are all on Dickerson Road. That's a four-lane road, maybe with a turn lane, I'm not sure. In certain parts, I think all the way up to Douglas, we've got a turn lane on it. So that's five lanes, right? You're talking about that and you're comparing it to a two-lane residential street and you want to put the same type of developments? But this is what happens, right? You see one thing over there and then you want to do it over here. And then they do it on Joseph and then it's coming on North Second. And then next thing you know, the whole neighborhood is just, you know, nine houses on a lot. That's why I'm asking you again to please support the staff recommendation, please stand with Nashville Next, and please keep our, our neighborhood, single-family residential, to the best of its ability. Again, the DADUs are already coming, we've got plenty of those, we've got parking issues. The people who live near those houses, again, the ones on Dickerson, around the corner on Joseph, I get calls because I am involved in the Neighborhood Association about parking issues. This is the stuff that we're going to have to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Ma'am, are you, are you speaking in opposition? Well, we've already had the, the folks that have spoken for the position now. And so that, and, and so, but the applicant has a rebuttal. And so the applicant can speak for two minutes. And also the councilman.
Sorry, can you speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
So the applicant, two minutes for rebuttal.
I appreciate his concerns about our development on Joseph Avenue. But as we've already stated, we have overwhelming support from those people who live on Joseph and in the community who support us in these efforts. I understand a lot of the concerns, but we plan on having a development that will not only support what we're trying to do, but also adhere to all those parking issues that he feels to be a concern by us developing on our land. And we appreciate you all taking time out to hear both sides and hope you make a sound decision as such. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman?
I want to thank my neighbors that came out, both in support and in opposition. Their voices were heard. As you can see, you know, we have some other neighbors from the street that didn't get a chance to speak, and I will respect the rules. But we'll give them opportunity after the Metro Council public hearing and at our up and coming Cleveland Park meetings. Once again, you know, as the chairman has said, and Kerry Logan's good at giving me the baseball signals in council, you know, that we're going to have a policy amendment meeting and set that up and get the policy changed. You know, if I can't get a change before the third, I will defer to give this commission a chance to look at the policy change and give the commission another swing at this. But to keep it on track, you know, so we can get this done before Christmas, you know, I know in November and December, we have shorter meetings, we have one meeting instead of two meetings during the month sometimes, depends on how the dates go. And I just want to thank you all for listening. And I know you have to do what you have to do because of the policy, and I get that. And that's why we want to amend it and bring it back again. But at the same time, we're not going to slow it down for my constituents, you know, who live in my neighborhood, who want to see this happen. And also give more community input and get a chance. And I want to apologize to my colleague, because, you know, they're, you know, because we're probably going to load up your, your planning committee meeting for the councils, but you're a very hard worker and I appreciate everything you do in support and opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll close the public hearing. And I'm going to try this because it's the same fact pattern as the last case. We usually all speak, but I believe that you all have heard the issue. And so I'm going to try, if it's okay with y'all, to go ahead and, and do a motion unless there's some new big fact that you want to discuss or anything. How about a motion or discussion?
But no, the only thing I wanted to say is I think, you know, when this policy change comes and then we start considering zone changes, we need to be consistent on what those zone changes are as well, looking at the entire. So that was another issue that stood out for me with these two, is that we were looking at two very different zone change proposals. So, I mean, when we talk about consistency, we've got to hit everything.
Yes, absolutely.
But then I will make a motion to support staff recommendation to disapprove.
Is there a second? Any, oh, more discussion?
One more, just to follow up on what, on that comment. I think, you know, because this is a very different zone change to an RM, something mid-block, that I would hope when it comes back, there was, there was discussion of wanting to make that area bigger or perhaps go all the way to the corner or do something that made more sense than just an RM in the middle of an RS. So when that amendment comes, to me, I would be more comfortable with that type of amendment. Not, not that we need to tell them now what that amendment should be, but I just want, think that should be part of the record.
And, and Councilwoman, you're absolutely right. As staff looked at this, these proposals, that was our thought as well, is that when we even look at a zoning, we wouldn't want to do it just mid-block on its own, but look at it more comprehensively with the, the rest of the properties in the area. And so with that, I'll...
So there's a proper motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of staff's recommendation to disapprove, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it. This item is disapproved. We are on item number 17.
This is a request for concept plan approval to create 43 lots. Staff's recommendation is to approve. The site is currently zoned RM 15, which is intended for single-family duplex and multifamily dwellings at a density of 15 dwelling units per acre. RM 15 would permit a maximum of 183 units based on gross acreage only. The policy for the site is conservation and T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance. T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance is intended to preserve the general character of developed suburban residential neighborhoods. These areas will experience some change over time, primarily when buildings are replaced, are expanded or replaced. The concept plan proposes 43 single-family lots. The lots, the lots as proposed in the concept plan have been reviewed against and found to be consistent with all the regulations and requirements of the subdivision regulations. The lots, open space and proposed public street will achieve a consistent pattern of development with the surrounding single-family lots to the north and west of the site. The concept plan indicates a planned collector's street, Shagbar Trail, will be constructed as shown. Shagbar Trail would connect to the existing stub street labeled as Mountain Springs Road in the eastern portion of the site through to an already-approved SP to the west. Shagbar Trail will consist of a 59-foot right-of-way, which will accommodate a six-foot-wide bike lane, a six-foot-wide sidewalk, and a six-foot-wide planting strip for both sides of Shagbar Trail. These standards meet the requirements of the major and collector's street plan for this residential collector's street. A small portion of the site, which fronts Murfreesboro Pike, again, to the east, will include a six-foot-wide bike lane, a six-foot-wide planting strip, and an eight-foot-wide sidewalk consistent with the major and collector's street plan requirements. Of the total 12.2 acres, 0.4 acres will remain undisturbed, saving the existing mature trees The image before you shows the planned collector's street according to the major and collector's street plan. The orange outline to the east is the location of the already-approved preliminary SP. And the outline in red to the east shows the proposed Shagbar Trail according to the major and collector's street plan. The purpose of the major and collector's street plan is to plan four street connections which increase vehicular network, the vehicular network, to disperse traffic in multiple areas. If one connection isn't provided, it puts additional pressure on other surrounding streets. Three arterial, Murfreesboro Pike, Hobson Pike, and Mountview Road will have to absorb more traffic straining the streets during these peak travel times if connections are not made as proposed. Creating a connected street network will help disperse traffic across many routes so as not to overly burden one single street with high amounts of traffic or vehicular speeds. The policy, T3 neighborhood maintenance, preserves the general suburban residential neighborhood pattern and provides for enhancements to pedestrian, bike, and vehicular connectivity... neighborhood pattern and provides for enhancements to pedestrian, bike, and vehicular connectivity to support continued development in the suburban residential area. In conclusion, staff's recommendation is to approve.
Thank you. Council lady, you won't be recognized.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Council Lady Jacobia Dow, and I'm here asking for you to defer this piece of legislation. And I'll tell you why. I actually met with the engineers, and I have had an ongoing conversation with people in the planning department about our major collector's street plan and connecting these streets into subdivisions. One of the biggest issues we have right now is traffic coming off Murfreesboro Pike, coming through the community. And what we've done is created a little highway in these neighborhoods, and that doesn't work. Many of these homes are close to the street, and you've got 18-wheelers coming down through the neighborhoods, buses, and all sorts of traffic. So, when the engineer came and we met and we talked about the plat, I told him, you know, we're excited we're getting some single-family houses. But on the other side, we have to address traffic because we cannot continue to connect these communities and have this traffic come down there. So, I asked him if he would sit down and let's work on how we can more effectively move traffic through the community and implement some traffic calming. He said he's only doing 40 lots, but he has entitlements to do about 200. So, he's not connecting just 40 lots to Shagbar. You're connecting a 350-unit apartment complex along with the 40 lots and the additional development that's going to happen to this area. And what I've asked every developer in our community to do is take in consideration now what we've done to our neighborhoods by, you know, putting a school in there where you have children walking to school and riding their bikes, and then creating these long straightaways off a major collector's street, Murfreesboro Pike, where you have 18-wheelers and all sorts of traffic, you know, using that as a cutoff and coming through the folks' neighborhood. And we really don't need that. So, at any rate, we met, we talked a couple of times, and he actually agreed. He said, you know what? I agree with you, and I want to work with you on some traffic calming and some ideas with planning. And so, I went back and I told the community that that's what we're going to do. And so, now I learned, you know, I'm thinking that we're going to meet and have a discussion about this, and I learned that they're not going to keep their word. They're going to, you know, move forward with this without any consideration. So, I'm asking for it to be deferred, and I'm asking for an opportunity for us to sit down and talk about this because it's not connecting, again, 40 homes right there by the school, but it's connecting 390 homes right now. And if you know anything about apartments out in southeast Davidson County, 350 units have probably, you know, three cars per unit. So, you're talking about a couple of thousand cars, yes, coming down a subdivision. And you're also talking about making another connection where we're already having an issue. Right now, if you talk with the police department, we have Summercrest Boulevard, which is another major connection off Murfreesboro Pike through the neighborhood. Right now, we have 18-wheelers, all sorts of traffic coming down there where we've had to put the police out there. We've had one lady's home been hit about three or four times in the last couple of years. So, we're going to have to do something better, and I do not want to exacerbate an issue that we already have by doing this. If you go back and look in a prior plan before I got on council, they had this to be a turnaround. And that's what was probably best suited to go there, is to have a turnaround and have an exit go off on Hobson Pike instead of going through their neighborhood. So, I support, you know, our ideal about major collector's street plans connecting communities, but not all of them make sense when you put schools, have houses right next to a playground. You're not, you know, you're connecting to apartment complex communities, and in these huge subdivisions, they don't make sense. So, I'm asking you to defer this to meetings. Allow us to sit down and talk. Come back to plan and have a conversation. Talk to Public Works and come up with something, and allow me to go back to the community and just let them know what is taking place. So, those are my comments, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Council lady. And so, I think you bring up some very valid concerns. We have not opened a public hearing yet. You know, sometimes there's disagreement between councilman and applicant. And so, let's ask the applicant, is the applicant in the room? Will you agree to a two-meeting deferral? Because that's kind of where, because there hasn't been no public hearing and meeting, and I think that that's probably very appropriate. Go ahead.
Hi, Brett Kreisman from Kimley Horn, representing my client. We would like to have this heard before you today.
Okay. That's fine. We gave you a chance. Let's ask the commissioning commissioners. And we have not opened the public hearing yet. You can sit down. Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll call you up if we open the public hearing. The council lady is asking us to defer to meetings to get input and have a public hearing, a community meeting in her community. What do you, do you all want to proceed with opening the public hearing, council lady?
So, procedural question. If we open the public hearing today and close it, then there won't be able to be discussion when we have new information about traffic calming. Can we open the public hearing, defer to meetings, and agree to reopen the public hearing when there is new information?
We can do both of those things.
So, we have that option?
So, we don't, we don't have to open it, but, you know, the question would become, why do we open a public hearing when there hasn't been community input? And I think that it sends a message from this commission that we take community input seriously. And we always have. It's not, this is not a new policy for us. We've always, and instead of having, you know, and I'm not sure that all the community knows what's going on, and I think that that might be appropriate. So, it's really up to y'all. But we could do both of those things. I'm just, I think we've always been on record for very strong community input.
And the other option would be to defer for two meetings without opening a public hearing. So, come back for an open public hearing.
It's really up to y'all.
I don't feel like we have enough information to move forward, and so, we would come to the conclusion that we needed deferral anyways.
Well, then, you can make a motion.
So, I would like to make a motion that we defer for two meetings.
There's been a proper motion to defer for two meetings and a second, any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, all in favor of two-meeting deferral, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and it is deferred for two meetings. We are on two item 18.
The next item on this evening's agenda is item 18, Matlock Phase 3A. This is a request to revise the preliminary and for final site plan approval for 14 residential units. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Site is currently zoned RM 15, which is intended for single-family duplex, single-family duplex and multifamily dwellings at a density of 15 dwelling units per acre. RM 15 would permit a maximum of 42 units, and the allowed number of units is determined by the PUD. This image shows you the phasing of the PUD, and the phase we are discussing today is 3A, located in the lower right-hand corner outlined in blue. Metro Council approved the Matlock planned unit development in 2004 for 104 residential units. In 2009, it was revised to permit a maximum of 101 units. 66 units have final site plan approval, of which 61 have been constructed. This review is for 14 units in the phase outlined in blue on the lower right-hand side of your screen. This will include, excuse me, a total of 14 units. Parking is located behind all units. Four of the units front onto Isabel Lane to the north, and the remaining 10 units front onto open courtyards or open space. In order to meet the goals identified within the 330 ordinance policy, Waterburg Lane will provide access to the units shown to the south. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions as the revised plan is consistent with the overall plan that was approved by council.
We'll open this item up for public hearing, and the applicant has 10 minutes. It's good to see you, chairman.
Thank you.
On the other side. You know how this works. 10 minutes.
Jim McLean, 3512 Murphy Road. Thank you for all the work you do. I know that's hard work. The staff has asked for approval. This is 14 units that was approved in 2004, and there was a wet, at one time, there was a, two access points, one to the east and one to the south. Went to the east, found out there was a wet weather or wetlands, and stormwater asked, said we couldn't build there, and that access was denied. So, there's one entrance off Old Franklin Road and one going into Monroe Crossing from this property. The council lady has asked that this road be blocked off with a gate, and I have no problem with that. I think she has gone to the fire marshal, and they're okay with it if there's a knockoff block on it. It's a public road. We've now built that with curbs and with the first layer of asphalt, ready to pull permits, and have no problem with road being blocked off. But that's something council lady would have to do from the council and then come back. There's an automatic referral here to get that done, be between them and Public Works. And I'm supportive of it if that's what they want to do. So, I'll open for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. We'll reserve two minutes for your rebuttal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, council lady?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm here twice today. I, so you know who I am. So, the question I have about this one is that, first of all, I want to thank Jim. He's an awesome person to work with because the neighbors came to me and they expressed an issue. This community actually is connecting to this Mountain Springs, believe it or not. This makes a huge community because it's Matlock, Provincetown, Ashford Cross, and Summerfield, all the way over to Murfreesboro Road. If you could get a good area, you could see what I'm talking about. And while we have an issue is because we put an elementary school there, and it's landlocked, so it's only one way in and one way out, and it's off two major corridors, Hobson Pike to O'Hickory Boulevard and then Murfreesboro Pike. And O'Hickory Boulevard is an industrial corridor. That's where you have a lot of industrial companies, 18-wheelers. So, when things get backed up, where do they go through these people's neighborhoods? The problem with this one, and the neighbors came to me, and I was kind of, you know, iffy about it, is that they do not want a connection to Provincetown. And if you sat out there in the morning, you would understand why. It's because it's a lot of cut-through traffic, again, coming through their neighborhood and cutting through Matlock. Matlock is a really good community in my district. They have some of the better neighbors in it that's involved, and it's very quaint. It's small, where everybody can know each other and look after each other. And they want to keep it that way. The issue I see from their perspective with having that road open is that their homes are so close to the road. I don't know if you, I wish you could look down and see, but literally, it's not much space from when they come out their house to the road. And the way people drive down through there, it is a concern of mine. So, they asked Jim if he would be receptive to, and they went around and talked to all the neighbors, of putting a gate there and not open it up so they don't have to have Provincetown, because we're building another, I'll be back in here with another 150 units that's going over there. We already proved about 80 to go around that roundabout. But they don't want that traffic coming through their neighborhood and cutting through, and I agree with them. Only because the houses sit so close to the road and the way they drive fast down through there and cut through. And so, he's agreed to put a gate there. He said, and I brought Chief White, the fire department, all these people came out, the neighbors, they met with him, and they said, can we put a gate here? Is that okay? Do we have to follow this plan? And everybody was in agreement, and they said, yes, this is what we're going to do. So, I only found out when this was brought forth that that's not included. So, I want to make sure that we're good with them putting this gate there with the code that they can get through, and they're not connecting there on Monroe. And if, and if that's, you know, okay for us to do, then I don't have a problem with this.
Chairman, is it okay if I?
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel lady, I just want to make sure that I understand what your request is.
Okay.
Because the road that goes from left to right, so from west to the east, that would connect over here to Provincetown, right, it would cross that stream.
Right.
To get there. And my understanding is that TDEC won't allow that road to be built at all. So, I think under the current plan right now, we would agree that that road would not be built. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Napier?
That's correct. And I'll, let me go back to the site plan.
Your mic's not, there we go. There we go.
Okay, so, yeah, that's a good, that's what you don't want to connect, because that's where everybody's going to go around the roundabout and come, would come across there if that connection were made.
Come across there, right. And then, there's a second connection. It runs aside. So, we have three more. It doesn't show on this, but we have three more buildings right there. It's three more buildings, and then it's a street that connects on the side. And on the side is where we agreed to put the gate. Because I wish we had some better images. Next time, I'll bring some pictures.
Can you go back to the previous image for a second that you had up? Do you have an aerial? Patrick, do you have a?
So, you can't, you can't see it, but right where you see next to that little purple square on the far right, that road you see there, it connects over to down by that roundabout, if you can tell on that.
So, but that one's, yeah, that one's not being considered today. Just the one to the north is being considered today. And we have in our current plans that that would not connect.
Okay, but what about the other one? That is parked right now?
The 102B, right, that's not before the commission tonight.
So, how do we get in? Because my understanding when we met and had a discussion about it is that we need to put this in the plat now before we move forward with the development there. So, I want to make sure.
That really can't be done during this process. That would take a different submission. Actually, from what Mr. McLean just said a moment ago, I think what you're, just what you're proposing, that if what you're talking about is that north-south road.
Yes.
That's already been.
Right.
Approved, then you're talking about some abandonment process through Public Works.
Abandon the road.
Correct. That I think you'd have to go through Public Works to have that road closed and made private because we don't gate public roads. So, it first have to be made into a private road and then approved for a gate at the same time.
Okay.
But this commission tonight, under this.
Okay.
Case does not have the authority to do that.
Okay. Well, I will speak with them. What I was told in all the conversations is that that need to be included in this. So, I'll just, I'll just go back on that email.
I apologize for that.
That's okay, because you weren't on the emails. I probably should have spoken with you. So, but I'm good with everything else. I just want to make sure, you know, that this does not impact them connecting on that road, and if everybody's in agreement to have the gate there and abandon the road, that we can do that. And that's it. But we're happy to have these new units and, you know, get to build it. So, that's it.
I'll make sure I get with you and the right people at Public Works to have it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Chairman, do you want a rebuttal? Or you, you have two minutes for your rebuttal?
I could talk for two minutes, but I'd rather stay in favor with you guys, so I'm not going to say anything.
Okay. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll close the public hearing. And how about we go with you, Commissioner Higginsey? You want to go first?
We appreciate the succinct rebuttal. I have no questions. I see it looks, the issue that came up is not before us, and it looks, everything looks good in terms of, and I trust the chairman.
Commissioner Graham?
I'm comfortable with staff recommendation.
Also comfortable with staff's recommendation, and then I guess if, unless other commissioners have something to say, I can go ahead and make a motion for approval.
Let's try it. Second. I try to be fair. Everybody speak. The former chairman used to do that, so I feel like I have to do that, too. So, okay, that's a proper motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and staff recommendation is approved. Thank you, Chairman, for coming down. We are on, well, there's been a few requests to maybe take a quick break.
If we take one quick item up, 22, I understand that the applicant would, is requesting a deferral in 22 so that they can have a community meeting? Is that correct, Bob? Okay. So, if, and is it a one- or two-meeting deferral? So if, and is it a one or two meeting deferral?
One meeting.
One meeting deferral.
One meeting deferral. So we'll try it. Is there a motion for item 22 for a one-meeting deferral? Proper motion. And second, any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and item 22 is deferred to one meeting. And so we have, do you want, everybody?
I'm recused. Oh, you're recused. Okay.
We have, we, we can try, let's try to, we'll keep going. So we are on item 21, last item. We'll go quick. I think, I think it will go quick. 21.
Item 21 on the agenda is a modification to the 31st Avenue and Long Boulevard urban design overlay. The applicant request is to permit a modification to the Build 2 standard of the 31st and Long Staff recommendation is to disapprove. The subject property is outlined in red. It is located mid-block on the south side of Parthenon Avenue. The 31st and Long area has a variety of physical conditions and is divided into sub-districts with specific design standards developed for each sub-district by building type. The property is located in the G3 general sub-district in the UDO. It is predominantly residential and is intended to remain so. The G3 general sub-district permits the following building types: flats, townhouses, cottages, and houses. The applicant is proposing seven townhouses, each with two-car garages. Four units front Parthenon Avenue and three are located interior to the site. Vehicular access is from a rear alley. The modification request is to permit three townhouses in the development to exceed the front Build 2 standard by 80 feet. For townhouses, the UDO requires that 100% of the facade be built to 20-foot from the front property line. On the proposed site plan, the red lines show the required Build 2 and the proposed Build 2 for the interior units. The four street-facing units comply with the Build 2 standards and the three interior units exceed the required Build 2 by 80 feet. The interior units face the backs of the street-facing units and front onto a narrow by retention area and a driveway. The space between the front and the back units is 45 feet wide and intended to function as a shared court space. The proposed shared court space does not meet the UDO standards, which excludes parking and drive aisles located within this space. As a reminder, UDO modification requests are first reviewed by the UDO Design Review Committee. The UDO DRC provides a formal recommendation to Planning Commission and Planning Commission makes the final decision on modifications. The UDO DRC met on August 7th and reviewed the modification requests. The DRC recommended disapproval of the modification as proposed. The DRC suggested to the applicant a townhouse court design with all parking located below grade and access directly from the alley and with a shared court space on top of the parking between the front and rear units. The UDO intends for a pedestrian-friendly environment with buildings that front on streets or open spaces. Staff is recommending disapproval of the modification as proposed.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We'll open this item for public hearing. The applicant, is the applicant in the room? And before we get started, this is a little different. This isn't going to go to the council. I'm going to have Doug explain kind of just the status and then we'll get, we'll get started with you in one second after the explanation.
Well, I think Singa did a really good job, but not all of our UDOs have design review committees. And this one does. And we were reviewing, we're going through a review of the process and exactly the authority and requirements of the different design review committees for the various UDOs. And in the past, it was interpreted that design review committee was the, the final, yeah, decider, the final arbiter on whether, whether the projects met the design review, design guidelines, the design review committee. But we worked with the legal department and as I said, we're going through those. And we realized that this one in particular, their, the design review committee is a recommendation to the commission, but the commission has the, the authority to either approve the modification and disapprove, not the design review committee. And so that's why, why you may not, those of you who've been on the commission for a while, you may not have seen one of these from this UDO, but why this one is in front of you today. And, and as she pointed out, yes, the commission has the, has the final decider on, on these cases and design review committee in this case recommended disapproval.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. I thought that was important. So the applicant, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Applicant, you'll have 10 minutes. And of that 10, you can have two for rebuttal.
Hi, my name is Peter Camara. I'm with Civil and Environmental Consultants, representing Billy Jenkins on this development. Thank you for having me here today. It's good to be here. I have these boards up. If you can't see them, I have half-size sets if you'd like. The reason I'm here today is for two reasons. One, I want to present to you our development and explain to you why we think it'll be beneficial. Two, I want to explain to you, I want to explain to you our reasoning for going for this modification and why we think you should approve it. As Singa said, she did a very good job of introducing the development for me. We're putting in seven townhome-type units on Parthenon Avenue, four front units and three interior units. The interior units are slightly narrower and one-story shorter than the front units. The front units will have three stories and an underground garage. The interior units will have an at-grade garage and two livable stories above it. What I wanted to talk, to talk to you today about is the intent of the UDO. You know, one of the biggest things was our, if we can prove that this development is within the intent of the UDO, it stands to reason that it should be approved. So I have that written out here and I'm going to address each of the points in the intent. The first is to encourage and maintain a pedestrian-friendly environment while minimizing the impact of the automobile. And as you can see in this drawing, we have, we provide sidewalk from the front all the, to all seven units. So pedestrians can easily walk to and from their homes. This development also provides, Bert, can you switch the page for me? Go to the architectural rendering. The development also provides a streetscape that is encouraging to make this more walkable. That streetscape, sort of having buildings there above the sidewalk encourages people to walk. It's something to look at when you walk, along with the, the park across the street. The second point in the UDO intent is to encourage an appropriate mix of compatible uses consistent with the location, access, and amenity characteristics of the area in relation to the West End Corridor. And basically, that's saying we want good uses that are compatible, and this provides that. The use of this property is similar to others nearby. There's a development to the south of this that we'll talk about in a minute that is nearly identical to this. This also offers the townhouse feel with a little bit more density. One of the options we considered was stacked flats, but a lot of people don't want somebody living above or below them. So we went with this townhome units to be able to fit more units and more density while still offering the privacy of the townhomes. The third bullet point on here is to maintain and enhance current public spaces and provide new public spaces for recreational use by area residents. This clearly, as Bert showed on the other piece of paper, it, it obviously increase, improves the streetscape without a doubt. I mean, that'll, that will improve the streetscape, and that's built to the 20-foot step-back line, just like everything else. And it provides a courtyard. You know, one of the Singa's concerns and planning's concerns was that we didn't provide a courtyard. And that's true. We did not provide a courtyard to the standards the UDO lays out, but our courtyard is within the intent of the UDO. Our courtyard will be a place that, you know, kids can play basketball in between those units or people can grill out. There will also be open space on the roofs. We're going to have roof decks on all these units. So there, there will be a lot of open space and a lot of, a lot of public spaces that, that'll be there. The fourth intent piece of the UDO is to encourage an appropriate mix of compatible housing types that work together to create a harmonious streetscape. And I've mentioned the streetscape before, but I want to talk about housing types. Right now, there are multiple different housing types available in the area, and this is just offering something different. Like I mentioned before, this is the townhome feel, but it still offers that, a little bit more density. This is seven units. We're allowed by zoning to build up to 12 on this project, and we didn't want to do that. We wanted to find a middle ground. So, so as, as I've mentioned, this, this complies with the intent of the UDO. There are obviously places where it doesn't comply with the letter of the UDO, or we wouldn't be here. But we do comply, in, in our opinion, with the intent. The next thing I want to talk about was another development nearby. Can you go to the map? So throughout the process, we, we noticed there was a development adjacent to ours that was very similar. And you can see on this map, our development is where, is right there, and the other development that I'm going to talk about is, is right there. Flip back one page. And that development is extremely similar to ours. It was approved in 2015 by the Design Review Committee. And if you look at, what, oh, it was, well, Design Review Committee. It was approved administratively. It never came to Metro Planning Commission for the reasons you mentioned. And if you look at this development, it's, it's really, it's pretty much the same thing, except it's, it's more dense. They have five units in the front and four in the back. We have four and three. And, and you know, if you look at that, take a minute to look at that plan, it's, it's really exactly what we're trying to do. And, you know, we are a little bit upset that this was approved and, and were not approved. And we understand that, you know, when you go outside of the letter, there's a little bit of subjectivity. But for this to be approved administratively and ours to have to go through all this is, is not ideal for us. We did meet with planning staff back in June to talk about this project. We showed them a sketch we had at the time. They had four units in the front and four in the back with a driveway through the middle. And we, we decided on this at that meeting, and we were told that the rear units, leave that one, the rear units needed to be, are inferior or subordinate to the front units. And I think we've done that. As you can see on that drawing, the front unit is four stories or three stories in a garage, and the rear units are two stories in a garage. And it's also 10 feet lower. So the front door of the, the interior units is, is a whole 10 feet and change lower than the front unit. So we think it is subordinate to the front units. This drawing's a little misleading because that top level is a roof deck. What you're seeing in that profile is the stair tower on the building to the left, which is the front, and the, the roof line four above the, above that roof deck on the right. So slightly misleading in our plans, and that's, that's our fault. And I want to let the owner, BJ, talk for the, the last two minutes, because I don't think we have anyone here in opposition.
All right, thank you, Peter. Thank you, guys, for designing this. BJ Jenkins, Nashville native, owner of Broadway Building Group and Jenkins Development Company. We've had plenty of successful developments in the nation, Sullivan Park on the west side and the east side, including East Nashville and South Inglewood. And this is the first time I've ever had to present in front of you guys. We typically do R6, easy go, here we go. So we, we developed this property. I've lived off Long Boulevard and went to college here at Trebek and Nazir University, so local here. And I believe, and along with my real estate agent, who is a personal friend of mine and also a Nashville native, that this was the best idea for this land. And as Peter said, we could have went with, I think it was zone for 12 and a half units. And we said, no, let's do seven, because I like the brown homes or the brownstone-type homes, you know, condos, that kind of thing. So we really felt like, even looking at the units that were behind this, they're going to be all brick facade, no fiber cement, no panel siding. We wanted to build a nice product for really the, the demographic that's there to accommodate that and to be urban and to also have, you know, to where you have your own parking underneath your unit. You have a two-car garage, not a parking garage. So in order to do that, to make this work, we felt like seven was going to be the magic number for, for everyone involved, including really the neighbors and the surrounding community around it, so, which I know very well. So I just wanted to come and introduce myself. I'll let these guys do the technical speaking when it comes to that. They've done a great job for us and just would appreciate any consideration to help us out with this project, so.
Thank you. You have 30 seconds for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? I'm sure you don't want to speak in the rebuttal. We'll close this item for public hearing. And how about Commissioner Diaz, since it's your last meeting, you can start first. How about that?
Okay. Yeah, I'm familiar with this UDO. I used to review this UDO when I was in planning. And I believe that this type of, the type of home here, like, it's meant to be more towards the street and not to front the alley or, you know, to be behind the building. So I, I think the staff did a great job with the analysis and I support their recommendation.
Counsel lady?
Thank you. I guess the only thing that causes me questions is this other property that seems to have a similar design that was, that was approved. Can we find out the address of that, just to know?
Well, Counsel lady.
Or can we get a response from, how that happened?
I think Bob handled about the last two meetings, and I'm pretty sure he spoke less than I have in this one meeting. So, so as I was mentioning before, this commission didn't have a chance to review those. That, the way that that was interpreted at that time was that just the DRC reviewed those. So this body hasn't addressed this, this issue about whether it's consistent. And I would point out again that the DRC on this one, and maybe Singa can speak to exactly why they felt it wasn't consistent, but in this case, they didn't feel that it was.
Thank you. That's, that's somewhat helpful. I mean, I, I think that UDOs are, you know, a common agreement that everyone makes together, and unless everyone together agrees that the intent is more important than the letter, I respect the staff's interpretation of the, of the letter of the UDO and that this doesn't technically meet it. And it sure seems like driveway is not the same thing as courtyard. So I'm going to listen to other commissioners, but right, right now, I'm in favor of supporting staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Galloway.
You know, I agree that, you know, I'm not familiar with this UDO, but the, the DRC's recommendation carries a lot of weight with me. And if the staff, it sounds like it concurred with that, that, as well, I don't think this counts as a courtyard, that part, how the units front and those things, I'm, I don't totally understand how that comes about. But, so I'm willing to listen to what everybody else has, but I'm kind of inclined to go along with the staff.
Commissioner Hingidier.
My commissioner to my right knows more about this than I do. My thing, the courtyard space, I agree. I mean, regardless of the frontage issue, and again, their weight carries, it's got a lot of weight here, it, it's not a courtyard, it's a driving space, and that doesn't count under the standards, so I'm inclined to do this.
Commissioner Farr.
I'm still trying to figure this out, but, and, I mean, I think I got stuck on the, on the, on the.
the 80 feet exceeded the build-to by 80 feet. So basically, they can't build back there and meet that standard, right? I mean, 80 feet.
That's, that's right.
Okay. So what would be the alternative? To face the units onto the others, onto the other street?
Well, they have a street frontage and an alley, and if you want to do interior units, then you can do a courtyard space and have units that front onto the courtyard. But right now, the way they have it designed is as a drive, drive aisle.
Okay.
So it doesn't meet the courtyard standards.
Okay.
And the UDO meant, the intent was not to have, was to have units that either fronted onto streets or on open spaces and.
Okay.
Prevent this type of development because the zoning allows for high-intensity development.
Okay. Well, then, sounds well analyzed to me. I mean, I certainly am sympathetic to the frustration if there's a project that seems very similar right down the street, but I also feel like this is a process that's been put in place for a reason, and we need to respect the outcome of what the design review committee came back with.
Commissioner Tibbs.
That pretty much kind of answered my questions. I will agree with the applicant, though, that section probably wasn't the best thing to show, especially for the subordinate part of it, but, but I do sympathize, too, with the other development. But with that, I make a motion to approve staff recommendations.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second?
A second.
And a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all, Mr. Sloan, would you like to say?
Just to be clear, the staff's recommendation is to disapprove.
Yes, I was going to state that, Mr. Sloan.
I was anxious to speak.
He wants to read three times more than Bob did. So the motion is to approve staff's recommendation to disapprove, and there was a proper motion. Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and it's disapproved. We are now on to other business. Historic. Anything going on?
We did have a lot of talking about lighting of Second Avenue that I think is interesting for the Planning Commission, maybe to watch our telecast video of. But the lighting was, we had a lot of workshops. We brought people, manufacturers in, and we actually did make a recommendation and approval at the last meeting about lighting on Broadway. So I encourage the commissioners to look at that next time it comes on.
Thank you for the update. Thank you. Parks.
It's still you.
It's still you.
Well, no, I don't have anything.
Nope, okay, nothing from Parks, nothing from the executive committee, I don't believe, Jessica, or do we have, we have a report for the executive committee, Mr. Sloan?
Yes.
Or would this fall under the director's report?
This is falling in director's report.
Okay, let me, let me finish the executive committee report.
Okay.
We have nothing at the executive committee report. Now we're on to the director's report.
Thank you for that. I want to introduce Lee Jones, and he is now in the seat that Catherine Withers was in. It's the director, or the division manager for Community Plans and for Design Studio, and I wanted to give him a moment to come up and introduce himself.
Thanks. Thanks for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to be back. I just want to congratulate Singa on a great job. I've got a great staff here. I was manager of the design studio back in the early 2000s, and one of my staff members today took the 31st Avenue Long Boulevard UDO and said, well, if you want to get to the standards, just go to where I've tabbed it in the back. The rest, the front is just a bunch of text. And I said, yeah, I know, I wrote it. So, but they're great, and I'm learning a lot from them, and I'm really excited about the opportunity, so really happy to be back. Thanks for having me.
We're happy you're back. Thank you. Lots of, and we've also heard that you have a lot of kids, too.
I have two, thank you.
How many kids? Is it three or four?
Four.
Four, oh, boy.
He is three under the age of four.
Wow. That's impressive. Anything else, Mr. Director? Anything else, Mr. Director?
No, that's it.
Okay. Legislative update?
I would just say the council is continuing with the short-term rental meetings with the idea of being done by the end of September.
Excellent. Thank you for the report. And we just, I want to reiterate, we really appreciate Commissioner Diaz and all that she's done, and we will miss you very much, and thank you for all of your service to the city. Anything else? Is there a motion or adjourn? Verger.